Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure to call to order the Wednesday, October 1st, meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. As always, item number one is an information exchange, and Kyle will start us off with an update on items reviewed by the PRB.
Yep. So, PRB in September had two projects on the agenda. They approved the final site plan application for Main Beer Company's parking expansion on the Two Stage Coach lot next door, um, next door to Main Beer. So, they've been going through some of their conditions of approval now. We'll have our, um, pre-construction meeting with Main Beer and their contractors in a couple of weeks, so that should get moving shortly. Um, and then a, uh, an application for a large-scale solar farm on Prout Road came in. So, that's in the MDB district.
MDB?
Yeah. And I think the, the total, I think the total developed area that they're looking at is around 12 acres. The, the, the area of the actual solar array is somewhere in the six-acre range, I think.
Where is Prout Road? I guess I could look it up, but just because I'm sure other people are curious too.
So, coming east off.
It's off of Wardman, Wardtown Road.
That's not MDB over there.
Yeah, Prout Road comes off Route 1 directly. It goes like east and falls north.
The other side of the street.
Cause that's, yeah, MDB is north.
Across from there, yeah.
North of B1 to Brunswick.
Right, it's Route 1, right.
So, it's a, it's a large parcel. I think it's around like 40 acres total, so there's a, a lot of room there for what they're looking to do, set back.
Oh, it's right by the exit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, it's basically like by the train tracks?
Yep. So, the board will do a site walk for that project in October, and then I believe the applicant's looking to come back for their final submission in November sometime, so update you then.
Been by a million times.
Uh, item two, update on the comp plan. Do you want to do that one, or do you want me to?
Uh, I, I think that it's a very brief update. Um, we have a new comp plan, which that's, that's the update officially and finally, so.
Yeah.
The council approved or voted to adopt it at last week's meeting?
Nine sixteen.
Nine sixteen, two weeks ago. Without much fanfare and some nice comments from counselors who I think agreed with us that the lack of fanfare at the end was a testament to the process that we went through to get there. So, a lot of public input, and I think we all felt like it was a good, a good process and a complete process.
Could you summarize the comp plan for us right now?
Uh, sure, yeah. Build some housing and, um...
Yeah, so you'll, you'll notice in our, our first full agenda item now, I've started pulling points out of the 2025 comp plan, so we'll use that going forward. It's on the town's website. If you go through the planning department page, there's a link on the side to it. If anyone wants a, a full printed copy, just as a resource for home, we can probably do that, so just let us know. I just wanna read it, you know, before bed each night.
Yeah. That's a good exercise, though, Wayne, to like, how do you summarize the updated comp plan? I think it's a good, it's like, build some housing, try to concentrate it, protect the environment, and be nice to each other.
Very good. So, it didn't take long.
Item three, uh, some zoning text amendments reviewed by council. So, we had the, um, at the nine sixteen meeting, the hearing was set for the main golf, uh, parking reduction for golf courses and golf driving ranges. That public hearing will be on October 7th. And then the council also adopted the paid parking moratorium ordinance.
Yeah.
So, on ten seven, we'll be, staff will follow up at that council meeting with some policy options in terms of ways that one could regulate off-street paid parking. And the point of there is to get some direction from council, and then from there, we could bring that direction to the planning board and work on whatever proposed amendment was, was needed.
Are they gonna discuss on-street paid parking as well?
Off-street paid parking.
But not on-street, they're not gonna?
The staff memo is focused on off-street. That's all, that's what I'll speak to.
And it, do you have a sense at this point, Kyle, how many, or as a tuned student to say, how many meetings we might need to devote to?
Depends, I think, entirely on what direction we go in.
But I think...
You're not parking?
Yeah.
Until we know what they say.
Yeah, but I think it's, yeah, I, I mean, I feel like the board's still...
It could range.
This is a pretty high priority, and so we wanna try to hop right on it and make some space.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we'll have time to, to work on it. I mean, we'll make time if we, you know, but, um, the scale of the amendment will, it could vary greatly depending on that conversation. So, yeah, if anyone's interested, October 7th is the date for that council meeting. That's it.
Did you say they're gonna vote on the 7th?
No, the 7th is not a vote. It's just getting some feedback from council on the policy direction.
They already voted, right?
They voted to adopt the moratorium.
They did.
Yeah.
So, now we're in the...
I thought it was coming up at this next meeting, huh?
So, now we're in the, we've hit the pause button.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, we gotta scramble and figure out what to do about it, you know? Get, so we can get back on track.
So, the planning board can work on...
Now, is that, that October 7th meeting, will that involve public input, or is that part of the notice for that meeting, or?
I'm not sure if there'll be public comment. I know the council has discussed at past meetings, um, the potential for possibly doing more community outreach, depending on how that conversation goes. So, I, I don't know. I think that's still to be determined. I think we would find out more at that ten seven meeting if there was any desire to do more public outreach before the...
Public was relatively clear.
The public was relatively clear, and I, I mean, my concern is the timeline and the fact that, yeah, anyway, whatever. Well, we'll get there.
Before we leave information exchange, I, I would ordinarily report on the housing committee, which relates a lot to this committee, this group's work, but I blew off their meeting today. And so, I wonder if there's something from the housing committee that I should be telling this group, and if not, then we can move along. But if there's something this group, I mean, you can sort of see the agenda, and Brett, you certainly know the agenda, but I wanna make sure that we're informed.
I took your place at the meeting, Mitch.
Oh, good, okay, so...
And I'm hoping that part of the reason we have some committee members here in the room with us is that we might hear from them as part of item number four, which is a discussion on design standards in the commercial districts, which undoubtedly will be making changes with an eye toward housing in those districts, so maybe that's why you guys are...
C1 and C3, the C1 and three, C3, which I judically listed.
But first...
Okay.
We have, item number two, excuse me, is a, a review of the planning board meeting minutes, rather, minutes from the board meeting on September 3rd, just last month. Very quick turnaround, which appreciated. Does anybody have any notes on these ones, these minutes?
I'm recused.
Uh-oh.
So, you didn't even have a call.
We gotta table it. Yeah, sorry, I'm just, I'm just getting there.
You're getting to continue it for next meeting.
Okay, all right, so that item is tabled. We had to vote to table that? I don't think so, do you? Yeah, okay, that item is tabled. And that puts us right into item number three, which is a public hearing on a proposed text amendment to the design review, uh, standards. This would be a design review building height exception. This would affect Chapter 22, which is the Freeport Design Review Ordinance, Section 8 Design Guidelines regarding a building height exception for buildings subject to a design review certificate and located on lots with road frontage on Depot Street. So, this is a very specific targeted, um, sort of, uh, Band-Aid, we might call it, to achieve the intent of upcoming, uh, changes in time to, um, I guess...
To immediately effect the rest of what we did.
Yeah, so that we don't end up, uh, in a place that we did not intend for reasons that we can't control. So, this is intended to be a simple, quick fix that will be hopefully relatively quickly superseded by a more comprehensive update to the design review ordinance.
Yep.
Anything else to add, Kyle?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it really, great, it follows the, the VC1 change on Depot Street to allow 55-foot buildings there. You know, the current design review, and we've talked about it a bunch, you know, you can see it in the, the text amendment, you know, all of the standards have that visual compatibility test. So, in the meantime, while we're finishing updating the design review ordinance to deal with all this subjectivity in the current one, uh, this standard, we thought was necessary, and council recommended bringing it to the planning board to just kind of shore up that initial VC1 height change we made, so...
It in no way changes anything, except they can't complain about the height.
Yep, so it's only height, so if a project comes in on Depot Street, they still have to follow the other, you know, eight or nine...
Compatibility, whatever, whatever.
...design guidelines. But it's just that height would specifically be regulated by the zoning ordinance, and, you know, that design guideline two, you know, C2 for height and C1, scale of the building, which is a little bit related to height as well. The BORCH, the PRB shouldn't be making a finding under those criteria related to projects on Depot Street.
I only thought when reading this was that it might be clearer to put Depot Street in the, in the heading, instead of building height exception could be Depot Street, building height exception, just that's all it's about, so maybe it would just make it a little more obvious.
Depot Street, building height except, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, if, if the board agrees with that, I would just, you know, in the motion, recommend that change.
Yep. Any other questions or comments from the board on this before we open a public hearing? Do we hear a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion to open.
And a second from Wayne, all in favor? All right, the public hearing is now open. Any members of the public and/or housing committee, who are still members of the public?
Hi, my name's Matt Peters. I'm the executive director of the Freeport Housing Trust. Thanks for having a look at the design review downtown. I support this change, and I would say, why not exclude all height from any of the design review, not just for Depot Street, but for all of it, if, if that's what you're considering now. I, I don't think there's any reason to stop at Depot Street, since it is, um, height, it seems like height could be, uh, not a design element that needs to be considered by the design review board. Thanks.
So, just to follow up on that, the design review update that we've looked at so far, the standards in there would not regulate height, so I think in the...
In the future, it's gonna go away anyway.
Yeah, in the future, that is what we would be looking at, yep.
Yeah.
Hi, John Egan, I live on Curtis Road. Uh, I also served on the former Housing Task Force, ended up finishing up on the town council. I encourage you to adopt the text amendment as presented by the planner to, um, just erase any doubt that there is, um, not clarity on exactly what the change is that you all have already made as it applies to projects. The housing committee has spent the last couple of years focusing on what do we need to do to create changes, to create an opportunity, to create a climate where downtown housing projects can come forward, and they're now showing up. So, the vision and leadership of this group, with expert guidance and support from the staff, I think are showing results, and, and I encourage you to just follow along that line and make sure that we can get these things done without sort of something coming in a sandbag from the left side of the stage at the last second, right before the lights come up here on, for the dramatic analogy. So, I encourage you to, to do that, and, um, I just wanna say thank you for all of the work that you put into incorporating these things, um, and, and for the, the comp plan itself. It was a fabulous document, and I thought a great process, so thanks for that.
Thanks for your, your many years of service on these various committees. When you say finishing up, does that mean like, next month?
Did you disband?
When, when is your term up? On, on the council? Sorry to derail our public comment period here, but I am curious.
The housing committee had a sunset, and that was earlier this calendar year, so officially, the Housing Task Force has finished its work. I think all of the members stand ready should another cause de jour come up, and, and I'm thankful for that enthusiasm. Individually, I'm finishing up my last term on the council this month.
This month? Oh, wow. All right. No one on Zoom? Anyone else?
Thank you for your service.
Yes. Many thanks. No, there's no one on Zoom in the absence of other comment in the room? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? That was unanimous. Public hearing is now closed. Any other comments, or are we ready to hear a motion?
Are you gonna amend it as Wayne was talking about with Depot Street up front, or?
I think that's a good change, just for clarity, yeah.
Just so people see, when they read down through the text, they don't have to read to the last line to see Depot Street.
Right.
I made a comment to Matt's comment, uh, just, which is, I think that's a good idea, but given that we're about to amend the design ordinance, this becomes an overreach that then people didn't know were gonna do that. Everybody knows what we're doing on Depot Street. So, I think we should limit it, get it done, move along.
The phrase that came to mind with, for me, was, we need to keep our powder dry.
Right, right, right.
But I agree in principle, I think it's, I think it's the right, and that's, and I think, and it's, yeah, and, and I agree, I think that's a great point, Mitch, that we're moving in that direction. We just gotta, we gotta get across the finish line, so, and hopefully, we don't negatively impact any projects in the meantime, um, outside of Depot Street. We know we won't on Depot Street.
But that one's been well-publicized, and, you know, consensus has been reached.
Okay. Anyone wanna make a motion?
Is there a draft?
There is a draft motion. Oh, I've lost my place here in this document, but, um... Yes. It's on page...
Nine?
Page nine.
Well, the motions are in...
It's page two.
Two of the staff report.
Two, uh, oh, yeah. It ordered that the Freeport Planning Board recommended the town council, with the proposed text amendment to Chapter 22 Design Review Ordinance, Section 8 Design Guidelines, to accept buildings located on Depot Street from building height-related design guidelines within, design guidelines within the Design Review Ordinance, is consistent with the town of Freeport Comprehensive Plan. This should be amended to include Depot Street in the title.
And how?
Oh, it's consistent with the Freeport Comprehensive Plan, which wants, which support, oh, the new Freeport Comprehensive Plan.
This is a big moment, Mitch. You get to, you're making the first mo, motion under the new...
Which supports, which supports denser housing development in the downtown area, specifically along Depot Street. And encourages mixed, I don't know whether it's gonna be a mixed income thing. I, I think, you know, all types of housing in downtown, that's enough.
Yeah, I think so too. Do I hear a second? From Andrew, all in favor? Excellent. All right, great. Thanks for coming out. We'll see you next time. All right, moving right along to item number four, which is a discussion, or continued discussion, rather, from last meeting regarding potential zoning changes in the commercial one and three zoning districts. Kyle, do you wanna dive right into?
Yeah, so, I'm trying to...
Yeah, Mitch, do you...
Yeah, I just wanted to make one sort of late-hit comment just from last meeting. I spent a lot of time reviewing it and thought, I was shaking my head in agreement with everything everybody said. I mean, both on what needs to be changed and what needs to be preserved, including some of the uses and setbacks. And, and so, the one thing that I wanted to alert this group to that I didn't think was resolved and isn't even resolved in my own mind is the issue of frontline setbacks. And I think frontline setbacks is one of the most important things we can do. We might need to site walk and think long and hard about what we do, particularly in C1, not C3. I'm not sure what's right, but I just was stuck by, wow, we're gonna make some decisions there, and it's gonna have an impact on the future development, and it, it's a question what's right.
And when you say frontline setback, are you talking about the setback, or are you also incorporating like a build to?
Are we trying to create a street wall? Are we trying to create a street wall or not? I think it's...
So, you're sort of leaving yourself open to a build to line, or at least like a build to zone that says, like, the front facade of the building has to be...
Well, I think in C3 and downtown, we're trying to encourage that, and in C1, I don't think that, I'm not sure that that's at all realistic, in which case, what are you kind of creating? Even if it's 50 feet back, you're creating a street wall. And so, I think we should think long and hard about that, and I bet Andrew particularly has thoughts about it.
What's that? How close you build to the street?
Yeah, how close you build to the street and where. That's, that, that's all.
I guess, yeah.
So, we talked about it a little last time, I, Mitch, you probably caught the whole, like, parking in front of the building.
Yeah, parking in front, parking behind.
So, it's not something I highlighted specifically in here, I think it's something we can keep talking about for sure, but in some of the images of some of the, you know, buildings I pulled on the property, you know, you'll see a lot of what we talked about last time, you know, where there's one, two rows of parking, but most of it's to the side and the rear. I think that's, you know, looking at the corridor as it exists now, I think a lot of the existing condition is like that kind of framework of what we were talking about last time, so...
Okay.
Okay. But yeah, so this is really meant to follow up, like, one of the key questions last time we talked about was, all right, so there's this goal of, right, increasing density and making multifamily more feasible, um, but how to go about doing that? Right now, um, you know, we have land area per dwelling standards that are, you know, really high, which makes it really hard to, to do any multifamily housing. But there would be a couple of ways to go about changing that. You know, we talked about some more form-based code-esque style approaches last time, not, you know, full form-based code, but some more kind of bulk standards, dimensional standards that would regulate the scale of buildings rather than picking a specific, you know, you need this much land for every dwelling unit. The board had commented wanting some, you know, visual examples to kind of get a framework for, you know, what does a certain building footprint look like? What does a floor, you know, specific floor area look like? You know, what kind of buildings does that actually equate to on the ground? So, that's kind of the goal of this, was to give some background and context on some of that stuff. And then from there, you know, maybe we can, you know, lean into which style of regulation we want to go down when it comes to looking at increasing density. So, this whole idea of taking a look at, you know, a more form-based approach kind of came from a couple of different spots. One, it was one of the 2025 council goals for, um, you know, council wanted the planning board to consider some more form-based standards in zoning in, um, you know, at least certain areas, so I think this is a good opportunity to bring this sort of thing into consideration and at least talk about it. And also, the Dogbone Workgroup Report recommended carrying that zero land per dwelling requirement that exists in the VC1, where we just, you know, we don't have a specific density limit in the VC1 outside of, you know, your building can only be so tall, you know, you have to meet some maybe five-foot setbacks, you have a 90% max impervious, but other than that, once you have your building, you can put as many units as you can feasibly fit inside of it. So, there's a couple documents that kind of speak towards looking into this. So, a couple of things we looked at last time that I brought up in that presentation was one, floor area ratio, which manages building scale across lots of all sizes, you know, unlike just a, a strict max floor area standard, you know, where you might set it, like, you know, what we talked about last time, our C3 has a floor area maximum of 40,000 square feet. But on a lot that's only 10,000 square feet, that standard is irrelevant. Floor area ratio will be proportionate to the lot size. You know, in a mixed-use corridor, like our kind of C1, C3 area is, it's not downtown, but it is, you know, a mixed-use corridor, you know, you typically find a, a floor area ratio range of anywhere from one to two. I, I think that's...
Which means?
So, that means, we'll get into it more specifically, but basically, your gross floor area on the lot would equal your lot size if it was a one, so...
If you had a 5,000-foot lot, you'd have a 10,000-foot building.
Well, that would be a two, so...
That would be if you're a two.
Yeah, a floor area of one, right, would be, you know...
You built the entire thing wall-to-wall.
But that's not necessarily, because it's floor area ratio counts each floor as finished.
We'll get to some examples in a bit.
Because there's different ways to calculate it.
Yeah.
What did we do wrong?
And then, you know, so the last point there is it regulates, um, more than just residential, where a land area per dwelling standard is only for residential uses, a floor area ratio standard is not just a density tool, it's more of a general tool to regulate the scale of buildings. The other thing we talked about last time, it's a little bit different, is max building footprint. So, that's going to be a tool that you could use to limit the overall, you know, to possibly be a way to break larger buildings up if you wanted to. So, we talked about last time that right now, we have a 15,000-square-foot maximum building footprint limit in the C1 for retail. You know, that's clearly a way to get away from allowing big-box stores, which, which are, you know...
Overcoming.
Hundreds of thousands of square feet. But it's also a way, you know, I think it probably came after the Shaws went in, I don't know.
It, it never happened on Route 1 South, it was just they had to stop development.
But, but so...
We failed.
So, a grocery store, for instance, would be considered a retail.
Yes, and how big is a grocery store?
Your typical grocery store would be like 40,000 to 60,000 square feet, probably.
Right.
So, like a Hannaford or something like that.
So, you could not build a grocery store on...
So, it's a little...
That anybody would want to, but, yeah.
We're overgrown with grocery stores. We got one in Yama Thon in Freeport.
But so, that's what, that's what max building footprint will do, so it's not just the, the retail, but more of a, you know, we can have a conversation if that's a useful tool to look at for other reasons that we can get into. One of them being that the comp plan specifically in the Route 1 South growth area narrative in our new comp plan talks about allowing multifamily, but it talks about allowing smaller-scale multifamily. So, max building footprint is a way that you could do that. Instead of some of the bigger bulky apartment buildings, you could use a maximum building footprint standard to limit the, the footprint of apartment buildings to have, you know, the density would be the same, but maybe you could have two or three buildings broken up into apartments instead of one large building.
And you could theoretically use them in conjunction too, right?
Yeah.
With a FAR ratio, so you could say...
There's only like one or two properties in town where this could even matter, is that right?
No. No, because I think it could, it could, like, a combination, especially if you use them in combination, I think it's sort of like a very objective way to roughly guide the mass of a building without saying much else about it. So, you're not saying it needs to look a certain way, you're not saying...
You're saying, this is the biggest building we want.
Yeah.
And so, it, right.
But I think if you had like a max building footprint of 10,000 square feet, I mean, that's only a quarter acre, so, you know, if you have a one acre, if you have a one-acre lot, you could still put a couple of those on there, and if you say, all right...
But is 10,000 too way too small? How do you even know what the right number is? How big is bucks naked on floor area?
That's why I asked some visual examples, that will go into the footprint and floor area of some different style buildings, and then if we need more, you know, we can dive into that after, but that's all coming. You know, one other thing we talked about last time was kind of the building length of front facades, you know, there's... You know, there's potential for us to create, you know, like specific design standards, beef up those design standards we have in Section 527 of our zoning ordinance to make them a little more specific. And then we talked about that parking, which, again, I'm not going to go into too specifically here, but it you can kind of see it in some of the the images. So kind of went over this already. See if there's anything I missed. Existing ordinance, we use land area per dwelling. The C1, we have that 15,000-square-foot building footprint max for retail uses. In the C3, we have the 40,000-square-foot max for gross floor area, and that's for any use in the C3. All right, so.
In C3, hold on.
Yep. So like take.
Shaw's is in C1 or C3?
Shaw's is in C1. Either way, it would be non-conforming.
Either way, it's non-conforming. That's what I'm asking.
Whatever standards, one of those standards you wanted to look at.
I don't know if that was C1 back when they built it.
Yep.
Well, but whatever, it's in both C1 and C3, nothing like that could be built.
Yeah, now it would be considered non-conforming in its current state. I don't know what it was when it was built.
It was actually another.
I know there was a.
Yeah, there was, there was. There was the building that Mass, Mass Lening Brewery and the other one and the other glass-front one, there were two or three more of those. And they tore those down. There was a.
Really?
On the end of the parking lot facing the the road up to the hotel, there was one on that end because they had a bookstore in it. And then there were two other ones. Pritham Singh, Pritham Singh built them.
Yeah.
And the town extorted money from him to get his other permit. They said, if you build two, we'll let you build two, then we'll see how it goes. And they extorted, what, $100,000 or $400,000 out of him for the Freeport Housing Trust?
Something like that.
Because he wanted to build the extra buildings after they told him he could build them, and they extorted money from him. And told him he couldn't get his permit, basically, you know, they had a knife to his throat. Jeez, if you gave us a nice donation, we'd let you build your buildings. So he gave a bunch of money to the Freeport Housing Trust. He's the one that built, rebuilt Patagonia Building, the block went after it burnt, and a couple of other stores around town. So, you know, that's how we ended up with the Freeport Housing Trust, having, I don't know, $300,000, $400,000 in money, I think, wasn't it? Something like that, I think. Quite a bit of money they picked his pocket for.
And then they got torn down anyway.
Then they got torn down to build the Shaw's. So they are, the footprint was already there. They just combined a couple, they just combined three buildings, I think.
Yep. It it could have been an existing condition, and then because it wasn't making it more non-conforming, a new use can go in and, yep, that, I mean, that tracks with, yeah. But either way, a a building of that scale, new now, could not be built in either district. At least a retail in the C1, offices or other uses in the C1 could be higher than that 15,000 square feet. But so some of the direction looking for tonight is, as far as regulating density, you know, which kind of direction do we want to go in? More of the form, bulk-focused standards, keeping a land area per dwelling or some hybrid of both.
Comments as we go along, at what point do we?
Let me try to like power through some of it into the visual examples at least, because I think that might help some of this. This is kind of just intro to get out of the way. And then, keeping in mind this building foot footprint standard idea, and to differentiate Route 1 South from the C3, from downtown, is that a tool that the board would want to see used to kind of change the size of common building scene in each of those areas? So here is the kind of slide that kind of lays out the the floor area ratio and and what it means. So if we look in the middle column here, this is like what a a one FAR would be. And I think a one, if we were going to do a floor area ratio standard, I think a a one is a decent starting place for our C1 and C3. So currently, your C1 and C3, you know, existing build-outs in the corridor, it ranges more from like a .1 to a .5. So the, there's, you know, way more land than floor area currently in most of our lots in the C1 and C3. But if it's out of one, you can see, they're right, if you had a a single-story building, it would take up the whole square. If you have a two-story building, it takes up half of it. If you have four-story, it takes up a quarter. So a FAR of one really kind of leads you in the direction of two-to-four-story buildings, which I I think kind of tracks in the direction that we're going for in the C1 and C3 with a 45-foot building height, you know, allowing some multifamily, some mixed-use buildings, but nothing crazy, you know, not wanting to see five, six-story buildings. You know, the three, four-story building still leaves room on your site for parking, landscaping, stormwater, all of that stuff. So, you know, I I do think if we were going to look at something like this, this would probably be a a good starting point. And I will have some examples of downtown housing projects and what their floor area ratio would be on smaller lots, so you can kind of get a feel of what a one would be. Yep, Mitch?
Yeah, I mean, this is basically just a question. I'm confused about why this would even work, because if you had a bigger, it seems to me, we we we're trying to regulate the biggest building we want. And if we could figure out, this is the biggest building we want, and say, oh, you know, then you'd figure out the rules to say, to make it so that that's the biggest building that you get. But in this case, depending on the size of your lot, couldn't you have a gigantic building? And so what use is this?
I think that's why it, in this, in these districts where we have a wide range of lot sizes, we'd almost have to use it in conjunction with a max building footprint in order to.
Right.
Yeah.
I wonder why you even need that. I mean, I'm strongly in favor of a form-based code, because it seems like that's the public interest is, we want buildings this big, not that big.
Yeah. So you could do it purely through, you could do it like without a floor area ratio and just, you know, we have height limits, we have max impervious limits.
You have setbacks.
Setbacks, yeah.
And if you can fit three of those things on your property, okay. If you can fit one, you can fit one.
It's possible, yeah. Floor area.
Go on, I'm not sure that that's right. I just was trying to understand it.
But I think, and I'm not, I'm trying to say this without like putting my thumb on the scale just yet, because I'm still trying to understand that. But I think it's like where this type of approach might be useful is in an area where the lots are smaller. And if we're trying to maintain some breathing room around buildings, then you could say, you know, this sort of thing could limit the, like, how many buildings stacked all right up against each other you could get.
Well, but if you have, again, if you have a, what did you call it? So a footprint ratio, not a floor area ratio. If you had a footprint ratio and said, this is the biggest footprint you can have, and you had a maximum height.
So the thing with.
Why isn't it done?
The thing with footprint is, so we can get into more too, that you would probably want, because we allow such a wide range of uses in the C1, and there are such vastly different-sized lots in the C1, you're going to need a different footprint for each type of use, probably. Like, you would want offices and manufacturing to have a larger max footprint, most likely, than multifamily or or retail or something like that. You know, those buildings, you know, form-based code, typically, in a real form-based code, in a true one, you have every type of building drawn out to its ideal kind of scale and image, and every single building type has its own sort of unique dimensions and and scale that you would ideally see in it.
So it's not that every building has to be the same.
You know, like your 40, 50-unit apartment buildings, you know, Varney Heights and what's being proposed downtown, you know, those have 12, 13,000-square-foot building footprints. You know, you know, 22 Main Street, two apartment buildings, those were each in the 4,000-square-foot range. Maplewood Terrace Apartments, which I have in here, those are like 1,800-square-foot range. So, you know, if you wanted to promote those, like, smaller, multiple kind of apartment buildings on a site in like the C1, let's say, then you would probably want a max building footprint range for multifamily somewhere in like the 5,000 to 10,000-square-foot range. If you wanted to allow like larger apartment buildings, like, you know, Varney Heights or what's being proposed on Depot next to the garage, you know, maybe you want to allow a 15,000-square-foot multifamily building footprint. But, you know, you could have an office go into the C1 that could be a much larger footprint than that ideally, but you're not going to want probably a 30,000-square-foot building footprint for an apartment building. You know, that would create a very boxy, wall-like feel potentially up and down the corridor, which kind of goes against what the comp plan was saying in that area and kind of what I've heard.
Is it also, I mean, I could imagine it being the case where s- some of the types of uses, like a, like a, I'm thinking of, like, one of the boat places or the truck garage way down at the end, that type of use requires a larger building footprint, but you're also, you're not going to build like a three-story, you know.
Right.
Boat hangar, you know? So.
So it allows that trade-off.
So you might have situation, so it does in that way, at least potentially, make sense to have different categories for different uses. If if your goal is to say, like, all right, if we allow any building to have a 20,000-square-foot footprint, then we are likely to get some housing or office buildings where it makes sense to build four stories if you can, you know?
So that's what the FAR really does.
Yeah.
The FAR regulates both simultaneously, right? It it says, you know, if you have a 40,000-square-foot lot, you know, and you want to do a warehouse, you could do, you know, 40,000-square-foot.
The minute you go up, you have to be smaller.
But if you want to do apartments, you're not going to build a single-story, 40,000-square-foot apartment building, because, you know, all your. Yeah, interior units are going to be, you know, isolation cells. So you would probably go up, but the same 40, that same FAR of one is still regulating that floor area just the same. So the flexibility of it is sort of what, you know. So you you could have both, though. You could do the max building footprint for a couple uses to regulate kind of the general size that you want to see of certain uses if you want to avoid something specifically. But then FAR is kind of a more general kind of catch-all that, I I agree, Mitch, it is use, kind of useless in some situations, like all these other factors are going to.
Kick in first.
Yeah, be, yeah, parking, stormwater, you're going to have to do all this stuff, and, you know, the FAR isn't going to matter at all. But I do think it's this kind of general catch-all if, you know, in a unique situation, it does kind of regulate things more broadly.
We'll have another really global question, that I really wonder about how the whole group feels, which seems to me our 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 starting position should be to enable anything. And, I mean, just, I'm not saying we should, I'm saying you would start there and then say, what don't you want? What are you trying to avoid? And come, and so I'm trying to figure out, what's the problem with a big building? Maybe the problem with a big building is if it's not articulated, and it isn't a problem if it's a big building, or, you know, how do we even know what what's not okay?
So I'm going off of the comp plan, and I'm talking specifically in that Route 1 South growth area. So this is for a portion of the C1 down to the town line, talks about smaller multifamily buildings. I think a lot about what we talked about in that area was more clustered, like townhome-style, single-family attached buildings, not those kind of more boxy apartment buildings. So I'm going off of feedback like that. That doesn't mean that, you know, we can't kind of build off that conversation and do something slightly differently, but, and then the assumption that, you know, last time we talked about, okay, people are generally comfortable with going up to the 45-foot building height in these two districts. So we know we're kind of capped out at that four-story mark as far as building height. And, you know, we talked about max impervious, you know, right now it's 70%. Last time we talked about, you know, maybe there's room to go up to 80%, but anything more than that, you know, and then we're at downtown levels of impervious allowance. So that's sort of the the box that I'm going off of, but obviously, it's open to.
Super helpful.
During, you know, more discussion. So this slide, just wanted to look at how a floor area ratio and a land per dwelling standard would arrive at roughly the same thing. So at the end of the day, whatever the way the board wants to go here, I I don't think it's terribly different. So if you have a 10,000-square-foot lot and you had a floor area ratio of one, you know, you could have a four-floor building with 2,500 square feet per floor. You know, let's say, you know, you get two to three units per floor likely unless someone wanted to do some like really small efficiency units, you know, you'd end up with eight to 12 units total in that building. If you were going off a land area per dwelling unit standard, and, you know, we talked last time about making that 1,250 square feet going off of the the state, you know, legislation that's coming down, that would give you eight units as well. So I I do think using either of these will generally kind of have us arrive in a similar position. And then I think we covered most of what's on here. So again, building footprint, you know, you can do one max for all uses, but if you set that high enough that it's going to come into play for the larger lot sizes and bigger land uses, then it's going to be relatively useless on your smaller lots. And considering, we're now talking about dropping the minimum lot size in the C1 and C3 to 5,000 square feet, there is the potential for a lot more smaller lots to exist. You know, under the the state law, you know, we have to to do that, we have to allow that minimum lot size, so people could start potentially carving up smaller 5,000-square-foot lots in this corridor unless, you know, we changed other standards where, you know, we made frontage requirements, you know, like really big, and it actually wasn't feasible to do a 5,000-square-foot lot.
But if, I mean, a 5,000-square-foot lot with a FAR of one, like, that's not a terribly big building, right? I mean, so.
Yep.
But I guess it would, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I think it's unlikely that on a 5,000-square-foot lot, you would get many, like, mixed-use buildings or apartment buildings.
A multifamily building out of 5,000-foot lot?
So we allow single-family and duplex in the C1, right? So if there was a bigger parcel, someone could subdivide it up into 5,000-square-foot lots and do like a dense, single-family subdivision?
Townhouses can be built at 10 to the acre, denser than that. Oh, you got up to 12, I think, is that where you were?
On the last slide?
Well, that was like, that was only, that wasn't an acre, though. That was like a quarter of an acre.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last slide was based off of 10,000-square-foot lot.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, now a quarter acre, I got it.
Yep. I'm just trying to think, yeah.
But so this is just kind of saying about, if we were going to do a max building footprint, it probably makes sense to do it kind of variably depending on the land use. It could be broken down into categories, you know, residential, retail, or retail-scale commercial uses, and then your larger commercial uses, but, because, you know, you'll see in the the coming slides, like, the footprint of Main Beer is obviously much larger than the footprint of Maplewood Terrace, you know, it's completely different uses. All right, so let's start getting into some examples. So I'll go through these quickly, but just highlight some of these.
It's helpful.
These numbers. So I tried to do like a, an overview to see the building in relation to the lot and also what it looks like from the ground. So the Main Beer lot, at least before they just combined with the lot next door, was around four acres. The building footprint, 28,000 square feet. Floor area, about 51,000 square feet. So that gives it a a floor area ratio of .31, right? So they're not even close to that, that one number.
Do you know what the front setback is from the street, just out of curiosity?
The setback is, I mean, it's pretty close. This landscape buffer would probably be 15 feet to meet the requirement, and then another 18 and a half for these parking spaces. That's 33, 24, it's probably like 60 feet-ish.
That's helpful, yeah.
You know, this portion of the front facade that's projecting here is about 60 feet. If you take kind of the whole width of this part of the building, it's more like 120 feet. Chilton Furniture in the C3 district, so this is about an acre lot, the building footprint's around 8,000 square feet, floor area about twice that. That front portion of the facade is 35 feet. Again, this is a .38 floor area ratio. Again, this is a .38 floor area ratio. So, you know, they have a lot of, you know, kind of open land in the back beyond what the setbacks would require. And, you know, looking at this, they're probably nowhere near their max impervious allowance of 70%. But again, you have to remember though, like, you know, say when we're looking at housing, the more, and really, commercial uses too, the more building you're adding, the more parking it's going to require as well. So you're kind of adding two pieces of, of developed area at the same time. You know, there's a decent amount of hotels, right? So to give context for some of the scale of those in the C1, which Springell Suites, you know, is a little over two-acre lot, the building footprint, 17,000 square feet. Floor area is almost 50,000. And then, you know, we have a, a much longer front facade length here of 230 square feet, or 230 feet. So I put that front facade length in there because if we wanted to talk about, you know, you need to break up a building or buildings can only have a facade length of so long before they needed a, a gap or something and, you know, the building need to be separate entirely. Because of the wide range of uses in these corridors, you know, you get some longer buildings like this, you get some more narrow buildings, it's just something to take into consideration where it's not like they're all in the same ballpark. You have some uses with much longer facade lengths than others.
Right, and we also don't want to go around creating all sorts of non-conformities if we can avoid it.
Is this non-conformant?
No.
No, no, I don't.
Either of the building, oh, because it's not retail.
It's not retail, so it doesn't have to meet that 15,000 square feet, yep. Uh, so this is actually one of the higher, it might be the highest floor area ratio that I saw in the C1 at .53.
So we're not really limiting things relative to the existing lot sizes and the existing structure sizes, but with like a FAR of one, for example?
Right, that's, yeah, that's kind of why.
It's more of like a, like a, a guardrail for future types of development that we could see that might start to intrude upon the desire for smaller scale multifamily or smaller scale residential development down in the C1 where we, in the comp plan, talked about putting that sort of development, trying to encourage it downtown.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
I'm still trying and have, having trouble understanding how it has anything to do with the lot size. This has everything to do with the lot size and it seems, so if you wanted to build a multifamily building that looked like that, could you? And if, assuming that people don't, I mean, first of all, I'd like to know, could we? And is that, is that against what the town wants or the comp plan says? And if it is, in what way is it against and how would you limit it to accomplish that? And I don't know how the floor area ratio is getting us closer to that.
Yeah, I'm, I don't think it does on a bigger.
Yeah, that's not really, the floor area ratio isn't going to talk about multifamily, whether, you know, you want larger apartment buildings or, or smaller, broken-up apartment buildings to achieve the same density.
But to take one of, the one or two parcels on the, on the south side of Route 1 there that could be developed into townhomes. Could, so then we sit here and say, the townhomes could only be this big or the buildings can only be that big. But if somebody wanted to build a hotel on that same property, they would be permitted, right? So why does the town care?
That's for you to decide, I don't know. So we're going to get into some examples of multifamily housing, which I'm interested in seeing, you know.
Okay, okay, let's go, this is good.
So Maplewood Terrace Apartments is one of the smaller footprint multifamilies, right? 1,800 square feet per building, they have two buildings, nine units in each one. Floor area combined between both buildings is 10,000 square feet. So this is really small multifamily. These are on about an acre lot with a .23 FAR. So now, right, our building height is going to go up to 45.
You're calling the left and right has two separate buildings there.
This one.
So it's really their 900 square foot apartments, three stacked?
I think you're saying they're like 500 square foot apartments.
Six in each building, two on each floor.
How could it be 1,800 square foot building for an apartment?
This building is an 1,800 square foot building footprint. They're like 50.
But the interior would, would increase it, so.
Oh, and with, there's two per floor, so there are two 900 square foot apartments?
Go up the, go up the stairway in the center and you go left or right. These were built, the same time the original one on Barney Square was built, Jimmy Lumpston built all those. Back in the 60s, late 60s.
But just right now, the numbers don't make any sense because you have a three-story building, so you can't have 1,800 square foot footprint in a 10,000 square foot building.
No, the, the floor area is for both combined, so it's like 1,800 square feet per floor. So that's about, you know, 5,400 square feet. So then 5,400 floor area in each building is where that 10,000 comes from. So the 10,000 is total between the two, the footprint is for, per building.
The number's around it too.
Yep.
Okay.
So the floor area for like this building on the left would be 5,000 something. So the point is just to show, you know, when we're talking about a floor area ratio or, you know, you're, you're getting 10,000 square feet of floor area, it's just split into two buildings. So this is, you know, where I wanted to get some feedback from the board on the difference between multifamily buildings that are split up into smaller buildings and footprints versus, you know, like let's move on to Varney Heights, which is a 12,000 square foot footprint and a 36,000 square foot floor area in one building. And, you know, you have 42 units here. So let's, let's jump into this since we're on it. So you have Varney Heights, right? This versus what was proposed right next door, split into two buildings. So at 4,620 square foot building footprint per, you know, so. I'm not trying to, to say one is better than the other, but what I've heard in the comp plan, I've heard public comment made during the comp plan, you know, time period, is that, right, we don't want to have development focus in this area that would otherwise go downtown. So if, if there was a desire to differentiate the type of multifamily housing that you might see downtown versus what you would get in the C1, one way to do it is to require these smaller scale multifamily buildings in the Route 1 South area or maybe in the C3 area and then going from C3 north into downtown, you'd be more okay with these larger footprint multifamily buildings. So it's just one consideration, I'm interested in the board's feedback on it, but we can go either way, really.
How big are the units in that building?
Which building?
This building you're talking about right here, Varney Heights.
Uh, the units themselves, I'm not sure.
Aren't they small?
Well, do some, you can do some.
Isn't that a 55-plus unit?
Yeah, and they're affordable housing.
Divided by.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, 850 feet each.
850 foot average.
Well, and it's also going to take in a hallway.
Oh yeah, you got all your, you got, it's less.
Down to 700.
Yeah, that's right.
That's pretty small.
Those really aren't family operations per se with a husband and wife or two people or whatever, but.
But I mean, a lot of, so the other thing to, to talk about with FAR versus land per dwelling, right, is a floor area ratio is going to be more flexible when it comes to unit size than a land per dwelling standard. A land per dwelling standard says regardless of your unit size, you're allowed this many units. Floor area ratio is, you know, here's like your max.
What do we care about that?
Well, no, you, you would want to give developers more flexibility.
I'm just saying, why would you want to get involved in how big their units are?
Right.
The public interest is how big the building is, not what they do inside the building.
Yep, and I think if, and I think the, the other part of that is then if you are, if we stay with a land area per dwelling, it gives the push toward larger units because if you say, alright, my metric is how much money can I sell this for? Or how, you know, well, if I can only build the building.
I can only build eight units, I've got room for big units, right?
I've got the space for big units and I can make, and I might as, you know, I, I need to. Maximize my profit and my sort of efficiency of the structure, so I gotta build these bigger units.
Seems kind of dumb, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on, yeah, with land per dwelling, a 500 square foot efficiency, you know, counts the same as a 1,200 square foot two-bedroom, you know.
6,000 square foot penthouse.
Right, yeah.
So I'm very interested in what you just said about, I think the board and the community and the council would prefer if development were first downtown and second in C3 and third in C1.
Yeah.
I think every, but I don't know how to accomplish that.
I think it's maybe, it's maybe a scale question. I mean, I could see like, alright, the FAR, or let's not even talk about FAR because that, I feel like that's a harder thing to wrap your head around. I think in the C1, I'm just going to throw out some numbers that don't hold me to them, but you could say in the C, in the C1 for multifamily housing uses, you have a max building footprint of 3,500 square feet, right? Doesn't mean, you could build multiples of them on one lot, you could build 10 of them.
The density is the same, so yeah, density isn't changing.
Plunk down a whole row of them, you know, on a lot, but no one building can have a footprint that's bigger than 3,500 square feet, which is kind of roughly, maybe a little smaller than what was proposed over here.
How big is Depot, how big is Depot Street?
The footprint is 13,000.
But what, what were these ones, these ones were 4,500 roughly, right?
46, 44.
So I'm saying like, so, so we start at C1, kind of at the Armith line, we start with smaller scale, that size or maybe a little smaller. And then in the C3, you bump it up a little bit, maybe to more of Varney Heights scale. And then downtown, you say, alright, build some stuff. And we, and we really.
I'm with you 100%, it's just.
What's the actual?
It's just this building.
That was a beautiful building.
It's a really nice looking building and really nice size and what we're about to propose is much bigger, much denser than you would be able to build the one building, not the two buildings. And I agree that that's what should be there, but it's just, I just don't understand how that wasn't approved.
Yeah, take that down.
So I was really, yeah, I was really torn on using this as an example, but it was the perfect example to show.
Show what that size building looks like.
Yeah, to.
Just want to make sure nobody appeals it, that's all.
But yeah, I mean, you can imagine, right?
Buildings like this all across C3, would that be a problem?
So the C3, right, the C3 is different, right? There should, maybe the C3 acts as more of a transition from the Route 1 South area into downtown, so the bigger footprint buildings are, you know.
But you could still build a giant footprint, commercial or industrial in C1, well, commercial, not industrial, but.
I mean, I think that, that's up for debate, but we haven't gotten there yet. Like, we could, we could limit that to, or at least considers.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on.
But it'd be inconsistent with what's already there and acceptable.
Well, I think we could set the limits according to what's already there.
Yeah, so like for instance, the, the LLB in Office, right, is not in the C1 or C3. So like that's in the I1, it's industrial district, you know, I think.
Should be called LLB district.
Going back to, right, like Main Beer, right, I mean, that's like a pretty big footprint, but it's only 28,000 square foot footprint. You know, even Shaw's is a, you know, 62,000 square foot footprint. So, I mean, yeah, you could set some caps on like upper ends of larger type commercial uses because ultimately this is a mixed-use corridor, right? It's not just a housing residential corridor. The goal would be to, you know, people could live here, but, you know, maybe that new office goes in and they work, right? You know, down the road. So, yeah, limiting office manufacturing, those types of uses to really small footprints that make them completely unfeasible might not be what you want to do.
I feel like, maybe I'm just ever the moderate, but I feel like kind of moderate, like we don't want to, we don't want to be too restrictive. I don't think we want to be too restrictive on design at all. I think that's a really hard thing to wrap our arms around. So I think kind of figuring out some guideposts for scale is a pretty good target. So I think we're just going to figure out what they are or where they are, yeah. And I mean, as I'm thinking through this a little bit and looking at these pictures, I'm almost wondering if maybe the scale of the buildings in the C3, or at least the footprint, I should say, the footprint of the buildings in the C3, maybe it's appropriate to have the biggest scale or the biggest footprint buildings in the C3 where they're near, I mean, they're, they're going to be across the street from, I guess, the historical, like the Chilton and the Wilbur's and those nice old historical buildings. But they're also going to be right next to Bean's headquarters, which is probably the biggest building we have in town, at least it's visible from.
Close to the interstate, yeah.
And so, and then if we're trying to retain a sort of like village-y feel downtown, then maybe we have a, you know, still fairly permissive, I think, but we have design guidelines after all that we're working on downtown. So I, I don't think it would be unreasonable to have a sort of scale limit on the footprints downtown. So maybe the C3 is the area that has the biggest, the largest building footprint.
Yeah, and I mean, the C3, I mean.
You would actually expect that that's so.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I could think of one exception. If you combine some big properties in the downtown area.
Yeah, I mean, if you count the, whatever this thing is called, the Village Station, is that what it's still called?
Yeah, as an example, right, right.
As an example, but I guess depending on how you count, right, is that courtyard in the center that, I don't know what that counts for, so.
Yeah, I mean, the C3, I mean, if you look at the intent of it in the zoning ordinance currently, the reason, you know, for the big landscape setbacks, right? I mean, it was supposed to be this visually aesthetic, pleasing gateway into the downtown. So it was, you know, you know, further, building setback further away, you know, not as much scale. But yeah, does that really make sense? If you're thinking about it more of a transition up the growth area, coming south to north into the, the downtown? Yeah, I don't know. And I mean, right, it is sandwiched directly between downtown, I mean, you got the, the LLB in Office, Shaw's is right there. I mean, it certainly wouldn't be out of place to have some larger buildings.
Right, I mean, if Pet Pantry and the bank.
Yeah, and Gritty's, Gritty's is going to get, that property is likely to be redeveloped, so it's what goes there.
Right, and what sort of scale would you be okay with? I mean, I, I, I sort of feel like the, the scale of.
Barney.
These proposed, 22 Main Street proposed, like the graphic that we saw there is probably the biggest thing that we'd want in the C1 district, right? I mean, or maybe even not that, quite that big.
In C1, if you want to try to concentrate development here and limit, that makes sense. I'm just aware of the fact that you could have a commercial building way bigger than that, right next to it and so.
But you could have, you could have the, a commercial building that's larger in footprint, but then depending on how you play with other metrics.
FAR thing, it's going to be a one-story, it's like, you know.
Well, and also, I mean, how the space is used inside is just entirely different, right? I mean, like a.
The parking requirements are different, like there are other site features that.
Yeah, right, like a, a parking requirement, you know, for, you know, right, like Varney Heights, you know, at 42 units, right, that you need, you know, I mean, let's say it wasn't an affordable housing project, it was just, you know, normal multifamily, market rate housing, and they did 42 units in the C3. You know, you need somewhere around one and a half spaces per unit, depending on bedrooms. Right, but like a manufacturing space where parking requirements are usually much less per square foot because you're just accounting for employee parking, you know, you don't want public visiting those spaces a lot, so. Yeah, they are just, I mean, it's, it's hard to compare the, the size of those buildings because the use of the space is just completely different. So I'm curious to hear what I guess the board would like for next steps. I mean, my idea was I could kind of combine feedback from the last meeting and this meeting and start working on putting some of this into a red line text amendment. Obviously, we could still have changes from there and discussion and, you know, that's not like a final document. But that, that would, could be a, a next step to bring back something to the board just so there's something more substantial to actually chew on and, and look at. If we were. If we were at that point, then that would probably be a month off, at least from talking about this, so I could actually take the time to work on putting that together.
Right, you're gonna have a lot of work to do with the parking stuff, too.
Yeah, yeah, there's other things that are gonna come up that we kind of have to work on. Another point, you know, that I, I think is worth bringing up, right, is, you know, we're talking about increasing density allowances in these areas. You know, I, I do think we should have a conversation staff with some of our partners at Sewer and Water, just to have general infrastructure capacity conversations, you know, I, you know, Mitch, you made the comment before about, you know, like, well, let's just, you know, about like allowing, like, you know, kind of the top end and.
I'm not sure we should, it's just like a default position should be, we shouldn't restrict unless we have a good reason to do so.
And that's kind of the feedback I'm gonna get, is, you know, the things we're talking about is, you know, where are we with some of those things? Because what we don't want is to, you know, make all these blanket zoning changes, say, oh yeah, we're allowing all this stuff, and then a project comes in and there's no capacity to actually do it, and it's, you know, doesn't make it through the review process.
I seem to remember something in the sewer that is like roughly half.
The capacity was remaining?
Is that, Brett, do you have?
But if it builds out to capacity, we have to imagine that capacity that we enable is built. And in that case, do you need an impact cost or something that, you know, to, if it ever gets built out, what's gonna be required over there? How do you finance it?
Yeah, just real quick to Sam's point, my understanding is that the district currently operates at about like seventy or eighty percent, because it's old and needs upgrades, but once the plant, uh, project is complete, it'll be back down around forty percent, so there'll be adequate capacity.
They started that rebuild yet?
Uh, I don't think they've started it yet, no, they're, they're approved, obviously, and I think the finance.
But it's all approved, so it'll beat whatever we're doing here.
And we'll be doing some work with the utilities and partners through the Village Corridor Initiative, too, so there'll be opportunities to have that, that good discussion.
What was that you just said, corridor? What was that?
Uh, the Village Corridor Initiative, we're, so the main D O T Planning Partnership Initiative. They're doing some, uh, build out analysis and understanding, uh, sort of infrastructure needs there as well, so we'll have some good data to have that conversation.
Since you're standing right there, Brett.
Sure.
Would you, can you just give us a thirty second timeline update on that project? Like, when can we expect to hear something back from Spec Dempsey and when, like, when do we start to see the?
Would that inform the conversation we're having right now on C three? Now, it wouldn't affect C one, but it would affect.
It'd affect a tiny portion of C one, but not most of it, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of C three, but not much C one. So, uh, we had a meeting yesterday with the Village Corridor Initiative Leadership Team, uh, which is Complete Streets, Town Council, uh, and relevant town staff. Stan Tech shared a draft current conditions report for the Route one corridor. So, no major surprises, but they inventoried essentially what is in the corridor, where the sidewalks are, where there's not sidewalks, high crash areas, uh, and just basically the transportation system network. They've also started work on drafting the build out analysis, so that's relevant to this discussion. They're gonna be, they're looking at, um, the land within roughly a thousand feet of the corridor.
How far does that go, down to Main Beer?
Yep, that's kind of the southern end of it, and they're looking at, um, areas, you know, that are constrained. So they're pulling out land with steep slopes, lands that are wet, um, and they're identifying areas that are well suited for development, and that's important for a couple of things. One, it helps, uh, helps us understand what kind of build out could happen and how that would generate traffic and how we plan for that traffic and mitigate the impacts of that traffic. And two, it helps us understand infrastructure needs, um, utility partnerships, uh, and other, you know, anticipate the development in terms of what that would cost and serve that development and how that would benefit the town. So, um, they're moving, moving along pretty good. I think we're gonna have, uh, a meeting in November to review, uh, some more work on the build out analysis. Tentatively planned to have a joint workshop, uh, in January with the Complete Streets Committee and the Town Council to talk about some of the transportation alternative options that we have. Uh, and I think that they're looking to come back with sort of a draft work plan in February. Some of you, uh, when Jeff Speck was here and the team was here in June, he did a nice presentation. The following morning, we had the chairs and the vice chairs of the relevant boards and committees meet at the library and talk about, okay, you know, projects will, policy will come before the planning board, projects will go to the project review board. Uh, street decisions will go to the Complete Streets Committee, so getting alignment across those committees who would be involved in implementing this. So I think we'll have some good data to share pretty soon, and they're looking to move forward, I think, you know, by mid to late winter with some draft information, and then they'll be final, finalizing the report, uh, later that spring.
But is it possible that anything that they study would inform this conversation? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, so.
Will they say there's plenty of room and capacity on the roads for this many big buildings, and we're gonna create not big enough buildings to get the, how many units did we plan out, seven hundred and something?
That's right, yep, so they're gonna, they're gonna have some land use recommendations that are part of that in terms of how to, how to organize development in a way that, uh, is efficient and mitigates traffic impact. So what we wanna do is, to extent possible, have good development, uh, but also organize it in a way that we're not having too many access points, you know, too many trips, car trips generated, so thinking about land use.
Can we rewrite this before that's done?
Thinking about land use and, and transportation together is sort of the gold standard for planning, and we'll have more information about that that can be shared. Uh, they're gathering information and they're talking to some, uh, doing some outreach around property owners, too, just to understand what goals are, so we're informing.
It's February till there's a real report?
I'd say sooner than that on the build out, yeah.
I think, but to at least take a novice crack at your.
To not have to wait.
No, I think, but I think it's, I think the work that we're doing is trying to get our arms around the sorts of regulations that will incentivize build out that matches with the community's desires and with the, what we put together on the comprehensive plan. Whereas I see the information that we get out of this report and from the consultants as being sort of a check on like, okay, th- these are the regulations that will hopefully enact what you're looking for, and then we get sort of a like thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs somewhere in the middle. So it's almost more of a, like, we don't need to start with that, we need to check what we do against that and then, and make sure it's compatible, and if it's not, maybe we're gonna make tweaks.
We can't really ratify, I mean, so we can go ahead and draft what we think is right, but you can't really ratify it till you get that, right?
My understanding, just from, you know, talking with Kyle today, comparing work plans, is that, um, and jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but further discussion here tonight, and then with clarity and direction to staff, that, you know, Kyle would start drafting with the idea coming back in December. And I think that, you know, we can make sure that we've got some good, uh, data to share, to check, as Sam said, um, you know, in around middle to late November, so you can.
Right, and if we're, if Kyle's spending the next two months roughly drafting, we meet in December, that's a red line draft, then it's January maybe for a public hearing, but more realistically, we go back and it's, so then the public hearing is February and they're kind of aligned anyway.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll make sure that the two hands are sort of talking to each other here.
I think it makes sense to, you know, part of this amendment is just a straight cleanup of that ordinance section and just creating a better framework within those two zoning district sections and the five twenty seven performance standards.
Yeah, that was.
So I, I think we can do a lot of that work now, and then bring it forward and, you know, talk more, you know, December-ish, you know, get some feedback, have whatever updates Brett has. If there's more information that comes in, you know, just into the new year, you know, as we're like shoring up the kind of bones of the, the draft amendment, and we need to make some tweaks to numbers or something, you know, I, I think we could do that. But, yeah, if we were to wait to start until that whole process was done, I think that would be taking a pretty slow approach that could.
We can coordinate, make sure that it's informative, informing the words that Kyle is drafting.
Can you talk a little bit about section five twenty seven?
Yeah, so that's the performance standards for all the commercial districts. So there's building design standards in there, it's like, uh, an abbreviated micro design review ordinance, essentially. There are some access standards which talk about, you know, you need to have three hundred feet between access points on Route one. I think that's something we should look at, you know, in this period, I can talk with Public Works about that. If we need to, you know, kind of compare that to what the consultants are looking at. Because the, that three hundred foot between access points doesn't really match up with allowing five thousand square foot minimum lot sizes.
No, no.
Those just don't match up.
And maybe they should build a collector road.
And maybe the speed limit doesn't match up with some of these goals either, I mean.
There are signage standards in there, which we talked last time about removing and moving anything relevant to the sign review ordinance. The building design standards, I think some of them are worth keeping, I think some of them could be made more clear or just gotten rid of. So I think there's room for us to talk about some of that stuff. So I, I think there's enough there that, you know, like, that section in particular, we could have a decent conversation on entirely separate from that process, so. Trying to think what else is in there, building, signs, pedestrian access, I think that's.
Sidewalk, is your plan to look at five twenty seven and red line that in conjunction with this?
Yeah, yeah.
Cool, just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah, there's also that, that standard we talked about last time that requires like the, the access between parcels, the pedestrian access, but there's not kind of true standards there to regulate it and.
Yeah, we talked a lot about that, but I'm not sure we.
Yeah, I don't know that we land on it completely, but so that's something that, you know, I can maybe take a couple stabs at different language and, you know, see if it's easier to talk about.
Right.
That's why I think some of these things will be easier to talk about if we just have something to go off of. And, you know, even if people like completely hate it, it'll be easier to have a talking point, so.
The blank page is a hard, hard starting point, sometimes.
Is there general, at least early on, preliminary, I guess, feedback on keeping land area per dwelling versus getting rid of it and going to a zero land per dwelling and just using other standards to regulate scale of buildings? Forget specifically, forget specifically floor area ratio, building footprint, but just like the general question of having a land area per dwelling requirement versus not and using dimensional standards.
I would, I would say yes, but I'm assuming that that for.
Sorry, yes.
The form, you're talking about form based versus the others?
Versus like a land area per dwelling.
Throw out land, land per dwelling unit.
And to the extent that would foreclose less and be more flexible, I would say yes.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing for me is the, I don't think we should be incentivizing larger units, and that is like the best argument against land area per dwelling, to me, so.
Clearly does that.
Which zone are you talking about?
Any of them.
Either both.
In either of them, is, is, does land per dwelling unit serve any useful purpose? Or can we do it all with, with, you know?
Better, more flexible, yeah.
Other rules about how big the building could be, what the footprint is.
I'll have to think about it.
So the, I, I would say the, not that I agree, but the counterargument, right, is that in higher density areas, which I don't think Freeport is going to run into this problem, but if you get rid of a, a land per dwelling requirement and, you know, there's a real, like, crazy demand for units, like, think in a bigger city, that people will just constantly make the smallest, most awful living experience units possible, to cram in as many as possible to make as much money as possible.
But the building code still regulates.
Yeah, the building code will have minimums and things like that, and I, I don't think we're gonna run into that problem.
Also, if the market wants, I mean, maybe one of the solutions to our affordable housing crisis is four hundred square foot units.
Sure. At least, yeah, I mean, having the option to.
At least having the option if that works.
Yep. Okay, um, that's good, I mean, cause then I can at least go off of some of the footprint stuff and.
To what extent do, do these questions run into the issues when the state standards kick in, is it next year?
Well, not sure exactly, because they're gonna go through rulemaking in the fall, I believe, but then it seems like there's potential for certain groups to reach out with proposed amendments and tweaks to that legislation. So I don't know for sure if that deadline of next summer is going to stay or not.
But it does seem like, based on our discussion last time, we have a reasonable chance of moving in the right direction and minimizing the amount of rework that has to happen.
Yeah, I think either, whatever direction we go in here, we would meet whatever the requirement is, at least in these two districts. We'll have to go back in other districts at the time and, and fix those.
That was the five thousand square foot lot, right?
Yeah, bringing minimum lot size down to five thousand square feet and bringing your land area per dwelling down to twelve hundred fifty for the first four units and at least five thousand square feet beyond those four units, so.
No more than.
Yeah, no more than, not at least.
Could be less than.
Five thousand square feet in a growth area, right?
Yeah, after the first forty years.
Had to be in a growth area. That rule only affected growth areas, right?
Well, it also impacts if you have public and water, public water and sewer for areas that aren't in a growth area. So if for some reason a town had some water and sewer and they didn't label it a growth area, I think it would also apply there.
That's, I mean, I really should know the answer to this question, but what, like, is, uh, I don't remember exactly how we defined growth areas in the current comprehensive plan. Current as in brand new. Because the water and sewer, like, my, the district I live in is V one, right, we have water and sewer. I'm just curious about the extent of the changes, but we don't have to answer this right now, it's not a burning question.
But yeah, so I think either way, I mean, if we didn't have a land per dwelling requirement at all, we're going to satisfy that requirement because we just.
Right, so it's a factor that we take less risk of being in conflict with what's coming.
So here is the growth areas currently. So you can see the orange is the Route one South growth area. That's the area, you know, in the narrative where it talks about the, you know, smaller multifamily, and then you have the Village Gateway, which is kind of the upper portion of the C one and C three.
Now, did Cross Tree get included in the growth area?
Which one?
Cross Tree, on Desert Road?
Yeah, on this, the south side of it.
The, across the street from it, which is industrial, and it is in the growth area, right?
Cross Tree Apartments, on Desert.
On the other side.
Cross Tree, on the other side of Desert.
Yeah, that's Beans is all, Beans is land.
I think this, this.
But I'm wondering if Cross Tree got included, I don't see it on that map there.
Well, I think the north side of Desert Road was the part that couldn't be in the growth area, right?
Couldn't on?
It's not allowed.
Like the charter or something.
Yep, 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 West Freeport Village.
And nothing else is gonna get, yeah.
Right, that's right, we, and we took it, it matches up with the, the Village Corridor initiative, it ends at Upper Mass Landing Road.
So, the last thing to mention here, you know, when we do come back for, with a draft text amendment, you know, if it's in December, at that point, we would probably want to notify property owners in the corridor to get their feedback.
Absolutely, so we notify for the December meeting, you're saying?
I think so, I mean, cause that's.
If there's a draft available in advance, we're gonna be commenting on it, maybe ripping it to shreds, we might as well let them comment, too.
Yeah, I think it would be a shame to work through a draft and then, yeah, not get the feedback.
No, I agree, we've, we've done that many times in the past and usually it works out.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't.
Even though it means like basically two public hearings, but I think that's fine, yeah.
It does.
Sort of, I mean, not officially, but.
Can it be public comment without it being like a public hearing?
Totally, but I just mean, yeah, we have, yeah, but it's a good thing.
Okay.
Five twenty seven will also, to, to go back to where I started at the beginning of the evening.
Yeah.
Street wall on both C three and C one, which is defined as your set, front line setbacks. That's in five twenty seven?
Well, so if you're just talking about setbacks standards.
Thing to think through.
So, you could do it a couple ways, so five twenty seven is more design. So, right, if you wanted to have a standard about how the front setback is used, you know, like, let's say landscaping or how much parking you want to require, something like that would probably go in five twenty seven. If you just wanted to talk purely about your, your minimum setback is X feet, and like, let's say you wanted to do a maximum setback, too, to require a building be in a certain area, that would go in the C one or C three district section itself.
All right, so just give some thought to a draft. Yeah, so just give some thought to a draft of what we might think about.
So I, I did bring this up last time, I, I don't think there's too much, you know, we can look at maximum setbacks if the board is interested in that, so, you know, right, your minimum setback means, you know, you have to be so far, but, you know, you could have one building fifteen feet and you could have another building fifty feet, hundred feet, maximum setback will be there.
But in C three, you have a required setback that you might wanna bring closer.
Oh, yeah, the C three setback now is, I think, way too far, I think we talked last time about bringing that in somewhat, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we, and I've been sort of thinking about, you know, as I drive, like, drive through Yarmouth, and I know they went to form base code, and even in, in parts of their main street where you have, like, where the, where Route One crosses Main Street, and you've got several businesses there, like the Brickyard Hollow, and there's, what is it, Dunkin' Donuts next to it, and Hancock Lumber, and then on the other side of the street, there's like gas station.
Intermid and-
Yeah, and then, and, so in that part of Main Street feels like what we talked about last week, where you have some parking in front of buildings, but the buildings are still, there's still a sidewalk, it still feels walkable, there is parking in front of the building, but it's not, you know, the building's not way back there, but it's also not like-
I think the one row is a good, see, he mentioned that, and that is sort of the standard, like at, you know, at Mainly Custard or at Napa or at, you know, that's kind of the way that looks.
Right, I mean, so, obviously, right, the comp plan specifically stated getting away from the strip style development, right, like this, you know, the massive parking lot in front.
Right.
But then you look at some of these other ones, I mean, you know, one row of parking, most of it's to the side, you know, here, parking to the side and a little bit in the back.
Hotel, it's all in front of it.
It's all in front.
It's huge, it's a huge parking lot.
Hotel is maybe like, if, if that building's-
It's two rows, yeah.
It's, it's still not like a deep, deep, you know, it's, even though it's very wide, yeah.
It's not like shards, but it's, it's pretty-
I would say that one stretches the bounds of ideal, you might wanna bring it.
That's what I'm wondering, can we bring it forward?
Same with Main Beer, I mean, it stretches the whole, you know, like length of the, the frontage, but, you know, it's two rows.
So I, I think, I mean, I would be interested at least in seeing what could be achieved in draft language as a targeted, like, build to, I don't know, it could be pretty flexible, I think, I don't think it needs to be super prescriptive, I think it just-
I think it'd be better if it was more flexible, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, but I, but I do think we wanna avoid, like, you know, two acres of parking and something way out back.
The hardware store next to me, which was Rollins Furniture when they built it, he's got phantom parking out there, that he, the town finally allowed him, back then it was Jackie Cohen, this town planner, and they made him provide all this parking because of the size of his building. Half of it's got a play, most of it's got a playground on top of the parking lot on one end, because it never got used. We required him because he was selling mattresses to have, you know, a huge parking area that just was silly.
Sort of like the golf court, like, how many people can play golf at one time?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, I mean, these requirements, and, you know, back then it was more, you know, how can we stop them?
Yep.
You know, we, down that end of town, we fought, we fought the other end of town all the time.
So that would be my, my personal preference, I think, would be to look at some sort of relatively lax, but also-
Some param-
Yeah, some parameter, if that makes sense.
I also wish that while we're doing this, at some point through this thing, we just don't focus on housing and building, we focus on some of the problems that are down there now, the fact that we don't have good signage, the signage is too small for the area, there's other issues down there that we've been going through for years that never get addressed, and I just feel that at some point we need to address those, just not say, okay, we're gonna dump housing down there.
Yeah, so it's that-
Because it's a mixed-use zone, and, you know, there are, there are just issues that have gone on for years and never got addressed, it was just the dumping ground for stuff we don't want, all people drove by and said, oh, that's terrible, we can't have that, we're gonna, we gotta stop strip malls, there's never been a strip mall down there. Nobody's ever even proposed a strip mall down there. There's only two pieces of land you could put a strip mall on.
But we won't count one.
You know, I mean, we were gonna sell our house, and the woman next door wasn't, was, wouldn't sell hers, that would've been six acres, then we're gonna have a mini mall, the guy in Yarmouth where Romeo's is, was gonna build a duplicate there on our land back in the eighties, and the woman next door wouldn't sell, so, you know, but you gotta, these lots are so chopped up, we had to combine two just to get a few duplicate stores of what they have in Yarmouth in.
Right.
So, I mean, we worry about all these things, but they don't really happen. You know, it's been, it's been thirty-some-odd or forty-some-odd years of zoning that's gone on that made, you know, Route One South the boogeyman and strip malls and all this other stuff, and it just doesn't happen.
As far as fixing signage, that sounds like we may have hunted that to another-
I mean, getting those five twenty-seven signage standards out of there, some of those are worded poorly, some of them, I think, are overly restrictive, I think pushing that towards the sign ordinance and the rework that's happening there is good, because it'll be consistent with what's allowed in the rest of town.
Well, people are driving like forty-five miles an hour, it, it's not a downtown sign.
You need bigger signs there.
Yeah, yeah, if somebody's gonna have a business, you gotta be able to find it.
Yep.
You know, the woman at the antique shop, Nick and Amanda up there, then their sign blew over, and they tried to put another one up, and, and they went through hell in this town hall to get the sign replaced, you know? It's, come on, guys, either we wanna do business in Freeport or we don't.
Well, I can staff approve new signs for businesses, so people can submit them, and I can see if it meets the dimensional standards.
Well, some of the problem is the dimensional standards.
Maybe too small.
But it would be great to hear what people wanna do and see-
Metal signpost blew over, she put up two wooden ones, and that was a crisis all of a sudden. Well, it, it wasn't funny, I mean, it was months without a signpost.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not laughing like-
Oh, I know that, I know, it, it's silly because it shouldn't be that way, that's the problem. It shouldn't be that hard to do business in town, especially when you get a tax bill.
My laugh is a facepalm emoji, that's-
Well, I, I, I'm not picking on you, but I'm just saying, you know, it's just crazy.
Yep.
So we want everybody to go down there and build something, but, you know, it's gotta be a little friendlier.
Hey, one more question before we break, are we done with this subject?
Yeah, I think I have enough to go off of if everyone is good with that timeline.
I just wanted an update on my favorite subject, the design ordinance.
Not my favorite subject.
No.
I think Caroline is still working on compiling the board feedback, we also had staff kind of feedback and work that needed to be done to some of the process and applicability sections, and then we have to get that over to North Star to plug in the graphics, and then we'll be able to give it back.
So two months?
That's where it is, we might have something for next month.
That would be awesome, if we can kiss-
I mean, if we, if we have a skip in the action on this, maybe we could attack that.
Attack that and a, and a break on this, that would be, that would be good.
That's right, yeah, we'll see, I mean, we'll see what the, the parking moratorium feedback is, if that's something relatively quick and simple that might come from November. If that doesn't come, if design review's not ready, and, you know, I'm still working on this, you know, into December, chance it could be a meeting off, you know, just use it as kind of a, a working period to get stuff done, but we'll let you know.
Okay.
Wouldn't be the worst thing, we've-
No, I just don't wanna drop the design.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, yeah, I think that would be great, and, I mean, even, it does seem relatively likely, too, that the parking, it may be a big thing, maybe there's a part of it that we can get started on without tackling all of it in one meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see.
It feels like the parking won't be ready that fast, 'cause there's information they wanna collect, but maybe, maybe.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure where-
I think we have a bunch of data on the parking, I think it's really gonna be a matter of clarifying standards in a way that is consistent with the public feedback that we have to date, so.
That's for paid parking?
Yeah, paid.
With a lack thereof, so, all right, nobody's here, nobody's on Zoom, so I'm gonna assume nobody wishes to address the board on non-agenda items, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, I move.
Second, on favor? All right, thank you all.
Great.